Regular City Council meeting. This is a hybrid meeting with City Council, city staff and members of the public participating virtually and in City Council chambers. Please note that public speaker comment time may be limited if there are more than 10 speakers on an item. We also ask that if you are in person, please submit your speaker cards for all agenda items to the City Clerk at this time.
Real call. I'd like to introduce City Council members and staff present. In the City Council chambers are myself, Mayor Drew Combs, Vice Mayor Betsy Nash, and City Council members Jeff Schmidt, Cecilia Taylor, and Jennifer Wise. Staff present includes City Manager Justin Murphy, City Attorney Neera Doherty, and City Clerk Judy Heron. Next is closed session. City Clerk Heron, please call for public comment on closed session items.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on Item C1: Conference with legal counsel for anticipated litigation, if you are in person, return that speaker card; if you are virtual, engage that hand feature; and calling in, please press *9 now. This is the final call for public comment on our closed session item, C1. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right. Thank you, Clerk Heron. The City Council will now adjourn to closed session and intends to reconvene at approximately 6:30 PM.
So, um, we will get started. Hello, I am Mayor Drew Combs and I am recalling the November 4th meeting to order. This is a hybrid meeting with the city council, city staff and members of the public participating virtually and in city council chambers. Please note, public speaker comment time may be limited if there are more than 10 speakers on an item. We also ask that if you are in person, please submit your speaker cards for all agenda items to the city clerk at this time. City Clerk Karen, can you please provide instructions to the city council and to the city council and members of the public on how the meeting will proceed?
Yes, thank you Mayor Combs and again echoing a welcome to our November 4th city council meeting for members of the public who wish to provide comment. Again, if you are in person, you can complete a speaker card available here at this back table and return them to me. If you are virtual, after the mayor calls for comment on the item you wish to speak, you'll engage that hand feature and if you're calling in, you'll press star nine at that time. That includes my instructions. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you Clerk Karen. I'd like to introduce City Attorney Nerad Doherty to report out from closed session.
Thank you Mayor, there's no reportable action.
All right, we'll move on to agenda review. Agenda review provides advance notice to members of the public and city staff of any modifications to the agenda order or any requests by city council members. Does the city council wish to pull any items from the consent calendar or informational items? Okay, does the city council desire to modify the order of any other agenda items? All right, we'll move on to public comment. Under public comment, the public may address the city council on any subject not listed on the agenda. Each speaker may address the city council once under public comment for a limit of three minutes. Speaker time will be limited if there are more than 10 speakers for public comment. You are not required to provide your name or city of residence, but it is helpful. The city council cannot act on items not listed on the agenda and therefore the city council cannot respond to non-agenda issues brought up under public comment other than to provide general information. Clerk Karen, please call for public, for general public comment.
Thank you Mayor Combs. So at this time, for any member of the public who wishes to provide comment for an item that is not on tonight's agenda, if you are in person, return that speaker card. If you're virtual, engage that hand feature, calling in, press star nine now. Okay, currently have three speakers, so this is the final call for public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. All right, and our first speaker will be Masood Mustafi, followed by Mike Francis.
Greetings. My name is Masood Mustafi and I'm resident of Manlo Park for 47 years. My general concern is city management. I have problem last two years with the water sanitation when you call, yell at you. I have problem with the park department, safety, the park close to me. I have problem with the public work, with the street cleaning, especially on the fall last few years. And even I called city on the 330660, they would give you nine option and then they would say if you have anything and not enlisted, you hold, they would retain, somebody would respond, nobody respond and after two times disconnect me. Last two years ago, one and a half years ago, I attempt to see city manager, I contact, they said they get back to me, never did. And as far as recently, on October 10, I stopped personally in the city management, manager office and somebody, there weren't anybody there, they said the person is not in the office. They retain one call on October 14 and I explained my concern and now is November 4, nobody responded back. I just general concern of the way the city manage. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Francis, followed by Sherry Zazowski.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. If I'm out of line, just let me know. I'm just commenting on, I saw a lady on Santa Cruz Avenue the other day, she was talking about, you think about building housing in the back there off of Santa Cruz Avenue and my comments are just my comments. I would like, you know, what you have there, Santa Cruz Avenue, I've been going down that street for many years since the 70s, this beautiful street, you rate right up there with Pleasanton, Palo Alto, Mountain View. Those are comfort streets, they look nice like they are. To add housing, I don't think that would be nice. You can't go underground because it'd be too expensive. If you make them too large, too tall, they'll look ugly. Then you have a cement jungle like Redwood City, you know, and, and doesn't, the sun doesn't shine down there very much anymore. I think it's nice the way it is and you should leave it like it is, it's beautiful. You should leave it for, this is the future, right there. Show them what beauty's like. If you go with cement and mortar and all that marble stuff down there eventually in the future, it's not, it looks good, but it takes away that feeling, that comfort feeling that you once had there. And it, it's borderline on building, when you start building like that, European movies kind of show this stuff, you start building, you stack them and you pack them, it's like a way you control people. You don't need things like that. Keep it open, keep it comfortable, it's a beautiful sight. I wouldn't change it, I would just keep it like it is. If you want to spend something on your city, what you can do is what all cities need to do in the United States, because I've researched it, you need your infrastructure. Your pipes are just as bad as the pipes in the city I come from, East Palo Alto and the cities around the country. San Francisco, every time they break a pipe, they always say they're going to fix it. Their pipes are just as old as yours. And if you take a pipe and you cut it in half, it'll look like that. It's maybe started off like that, but it's like that because it's got a lot of crud in it. If you repair your infrastructure system, you could be the grassroots or the trend-setting city of the whole country. Repair, just repair all your piping structure. All your waters would be good because there's a lot of bad things in the water and I think you guys should put your money there instead of ruining something that takes care of itself. You don't need the money, Zuckerberg has already built you a bunch of stuff out there at the end of Willow Road, so you don't need the money. If you're going to do something, rebuild your infrastructure. All infrastructures are bad, all of them. There's none that are good. Every city needs to do that. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Sherry Zazowski.
Yeah. Good evening Mayor Combs and council members. I'll be speaking later on J3, but I, I had an experience that I really want to share with all of you tonight. I was dining and shopping on Santa Cruz Avenue on Saturday afternoon, like I often do, supporting our businesses, when a whole flock of emergency vehicles came down Santa Cruz Avenue and turned right onto Crane Street. There was a fire truck, an ambulance and at least three police vans. And I walked over to see what was going on, as many people did. There was a medical emergency, but I also learned firsthand, well, I learned two things. One is how awesome our first responders are. And the second thing I learned is that there's absolutely no room in that law for housing. There was barely room for the fire truck and the ambulance and people to be taking care of the, of the medical emergency, et cetera. It's very, very important that we face that reality. It's very, very important that we face that reality. If we end up with housing there, it will be endangerment for anyone living there and for people in the surrounding stores. So I really felt obligated to bring that to your attention tonight. Thank you.
That is our final speaker. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Yeah, that was, okay, thank you. Thank you to everyone who provided a public comment. With that, we'll move on to our presentation and proclamations section of the meeting. We have one presentation and three proclamations this evening. The first item is H1, Encinal Elementary School 5th Graders' Presentation. Here to make the presentation is Encinal Elementary School Assistant Principal Gina Watkins.
Hi, thank you for having us tonight. My name is Gina Watkins and I'm the Assistant Principal at Encinal Elementary School, and so excited to have many of our 5th graders behind us who've been working as data scientists since the first day of school. They've given up 12 to 15 lunch periods, which is a huge deal for 5th graders, to work as leaders in our community, collecting data to support a walk audit that is being conducted at Encinal with the help of San Mateo County Office of Education and Stanford's Our Voice. And I'm here with two other folks, Teresa Vias Kelly and Minji Cho. Teresa is from the county and Minji is from Our Voice. They have led these students through an extremely rigorous process to collect information about bike safety on Middlefield Road and the walking path on Middlefield Road. And they have some short presentations that they'll give you tonight. They've come up with some very thoughtful solutions that they would like to be considered in the community. And with that, Teresa, would you like to come on up? Thank you.
Good evening Mayor Combs, council members, Encinal community and community members. Tonight, you'll be hearing from an incredible group of 5th graders from Encinal who took part in the Community Science Leadership Academy, which is a partnership between Stanford Our Voice Initiative and the San Mateo County Office of Education Safe Routes to School Program. These students volunteered to join the project at the very start of the school year, and from day one, they have shown tremendous dedication, curiosity, and care for their community. Their findings remind us, or will remind you, that young people truly know what is needed, and they often see things that adults overlook. And I'm really proud of these students because they have the courage to speak up and to have the heart to help make changes happen in their community. Minji and I and her colleagues, Sophia, who couldn't be here tonight, are deeply honored to have worked with these students and the Encinal School community, and we can't wait for you to hear their insights and their ideas. And before I step aside, I'd like to invite all of the students and their families to stay for the Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day proclamation, which will take place right after their presentation. And they'll hear about another amazing group of 5th graders whose actions help spark a movement for equity and inclusion that continues to grow each year. And I'm hoping that after that proclamation, the students can take a picture with all of you before they go home. Thank you. And I'm going to pass it off to Minji from Stanford Our Voice.
Hi, thank you so much for the opportunity, Mayor and city council members. Next slide, please. Yeah, so to just go over briefly over today's agenda, we'd like to give a little bit of background, and I'd love to invite the wonderful 5th graders behind me to introduce the themes and solutions that they discovered during this project. So, just for a little bit of background, so all of these 5th graders have been giving up their lunch periods to be a part of the Community Science Leadership Academy. So you might be wondering, what exactly is community science? Well, community science can be broadly defined as members of the public, working with professional scientists to advance a research project. And so, building upon this framework of community science, I am an undergraduate research assistant with the Stanford Our Voice Lab, and we've built upon this method to give community members a method and tools to capture delivered experiences. And then we support community members in using this information to help inform local changes and build healthier communities. And the tool that we have used to build upon the encouraged, this community science method is the Stanford Discovery Tool. And this is a simple mobile app that community members can use to document parts of their neighborhood or community that promotes or hinder healthy living. And as you could see, these are kind of screenshots of what the application looks like, and these wonderful 5th graders have learned how to use this application and used it during this project. So, for the data collection walk, the 5th graders have used the Stanford Discovery Tool, and 17 pairs of 5th grade students, so 34 students in total, completed the data collection walk on August 29, along with school staff and project facilitators. And the guiding question that we asked the students to keep in mind while going on these walks around the school area was, what makes it easy or hard to walk, bike, or roll around Encinal Elementary? So, the pairs had collected 123 photos, 74 audio comments, and 50 text comments. So they were real on-the-ground scientists during this project. And this is just a little bit of a bird's eye view of what kind of the walking had looked like. So you see one group going down on Encinal Avenue and two groups splitting off on Middlefield Road. And each of these data points represent one photo taken by one student pair. So, really amazing data that they had collected. And so now, I'd love to introduce the first group to come up here and introduce ourselves with the kind of findings and themes that they had collected during this whole project.
Hi, I'm Quinn.
I'm Zoe.
I'm Kate.
I'm Yee.
I'm Campbell.
And I'm Rebecca.
Today, we're going to be talking about how we can make it easier to bike, walk, or roll to school.
In these first three pictures, the first, one of them is green and the other two are red. The first one, it shows that the cross path is not that bright, and it's also really narrow. And the second one, says that the bike lane is very narrow, and I think we could help with that by straightening them out, and so some of the cars won't pass, like, roll into it, and the bikers could feel safe.
Next slide. The, on two of, the first two photos are about something blocking the bike lane, and as Zoe said, the bike lanes are very small, so it's making it even smaller. So I think we also could widen the bike lanes.
So our solution is to widen the bike lane, so the bikers have more room to bike and it's safer for them to bike. We think that maybe if we widen the bike lane and let the lane, bike lane take over some space on the road, it might sort of force the cars to slow down, and that could make it safer for the bikers.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dylan.
I'm Erin.
I'm Kai.
I'm Damian.
I'm Olivia.
So, now we're going to be talking about another solution to make bikers feel more safe and more protected near Encinal Elementary School and Middlefield Road. As you can see in the first picture, it shows that the bike lanes, that you can barely see the bike lanes. But in the second picture, that's what could be in all the streets in Middlefield Road. We just need to make them a little brighter.
Yes, uh, go back. Yes, just what Dylan said, but also the bike lane should be visible in the dark too, like at night. There should be like some reflectors on the bike lane, and they should be glow in the dark, so cars don't accidentally go into the bike lane by accident.
Sorry. So now that we've told you the facts, now we're going to listen to a personal story that my friend Olivia's going to share.
Hi again, I bike to school, my dad, on Middlefield Road every day to school, and the cars tend to veer into the bike lane and speed up and go really fast, and that makes me feel scared. So, from all the ideas you've heard so far, I had to make it safer for kids like me to bike to school. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Noel.
Hi, I'm Elliot.
I'm Oliver.
And I'm George.
As you've heard before, the problem is that cars keep driving into the bike lane.
Our solution is that we could either put recycled, recycled plastic reflective delineators or planter boxes between the bike lane and the road to protect the bikers.
If we put a planter box or delineator in between the bike lane and the road, people that normally drive cars, stop driving cars and use the bike lane.
The delineators we thought of would be about five to 10 pounds, also about 40 inches, and 95% recycled, which would be enough to block the car from going into the bike lanes. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, I'm Tonia.
I'm Hillary.
I'm Emma.
Today, we're talking about the walking path on Middlefield Road.
In the first picture, it's, there's no sidewalk, so it's very dangerous. And in the second picture, there's a big hole, so people can trip in it.
In the first picture, it shows that you can walk, but it's going to be way harder to use a wheelchair and stuff. Next slide, please. In this picture, in the first picture, it shows that there's a lot of nature, and that's definitely good for the environment. The second picture, as the group before us said, that there's no really protection.
Next slide. So our solution is even out walking path on Middlefield, and how we could do that is put like some kind of more compact dirt than concrete.
Like, not concrete, but like still, like some sort of hard material, and like a little event that we could do like for schools to pick up all the trash on, like try to pick up some of the trash on Middlefield Road and get some of the debris out of the way, and not do concrete to still keep the nature kind of feeling, because it's just nice to see some nature out here. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Waverly.
I'm Ruby.
Our problem is, there is not much protection in between the walking path and the bike lane, so bikes can veer in. There's only a tree about every five feet. So our solution would be putting some kind of barrier in between the trees and the walking path and the bike lane.
Um, we could put like bushes, yeah, we could put bushes so that it's like not super heavy to, because sometimes if you put really heavy stuff in it, and if the cars go in, then it hits the people on the inside, but if you put bushes, they'll be rooted in, and then nobody gets hurt.
Some examples of the bushes we could use are, we could use a holly bush, a holly bush, maybe an English holly, because that can grow on its own and it doesn't need much help. And we could put that on the outside, so that it's kind of still rough and strong, but it doesn't hurt the car too much. And on the inside, we could put a lamb's ear bush, because that's soft, and if people accidentally walk into it, it won't hurt them. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for the really great presentations. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for our budding council members, congress, women and men, governors and presidents? Yeah, Councilmember Schmidt?
Thank you Mayor. A couple things, I just want to say, thank you so much to Assistant Principal Watkins, Superintendent Garcia, the Office of Ed and Stanford. This is an amazing project, and I really appreciate everyone, the work that all the students put in, because this is real work. This is the real work of government, this is the real work of being part of the community. This is your home too, so thank you for, you know, your voices and your ideas, not only highlighting the problems, but coming up with real solutions too. So, I didn't really have a question, I just wanted to say how much I appreciate every student putting in the work and coming out and talking to us and sharing that with the whole city. So, thank you everybody.
Yeah, and I'll just add, yeah, thank you guys for all the work and for the presentations and for the really solid and good ideas. I know the city manager was taking notes. I was taking notes and we all have your presentations. I'd also encourage you, because another key thing about being in government is stamina and stick-to-it-ness, that we will be doing in a few months, our annual goal planning session, where the council sets like what its goals are for the next year. And so I'd also encourage you guys to come there and present again, or at least share again some of your ideas to get them on our goal planning session. So, thank you, thank you all very much. And so I know now we're going to, we're going to switch to the Ruby Bridges proclamation. And so I'll start that off. Every November 14th, for Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, we celebrate Ruby Bridges, who at six years old was the first African-American student to integrate William France Elementary School in the city of New Orleans on November 14, 1960, in her courageous walk past hateful protesters who didn't want her to attend. On this day, students are encouraged to walk to school and engage in a day of dialogue about activism, anti-racism, and anti-bullying. We'd like to invite San Mateo County Office of Education Safe Routes to School Coordinator, Teresa Vales Kelly, to accept the proclamation.
Thank you so much Mayor Combs, council members, and everyone here tonight. It's truly an honor to accept this resolution on behalf of Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day, and I'm especially proud to have been a part of this celebration since its very beginning and to be one of the instigators who helped get it started. The inspiration came from a remarkable group of 5th graders at Martin Elementary School in South San Francisco back in 2018. Their idea to honor Ruby Bridges' courage and to stand up for kindness and inclusion sparked... Their idea to honor Ruby Bridges' courage and to stand up for kindness and inclusion sparked a movement that has grown far beyond that single classroom. Those students who were just ten and eleven years old at the time are now freshmen in college. Their idea continues to inspire thousands of students across our county, our state, and the country to walk in Ruby's footsteps and make their schools more inclusive places for everyone. And how fitting that tonight you heard from another incredible group of fifth graders, students from the Community Science Leadership Academy, who presented their data walk findings and shared their ideas for improving the streets around their schools. They are following in Ruby's footsteps, observing, questioning, and taking action to make their communities safer and stronger. By honoring this day each year, the city of Menlo Park is helping to keep that spirit of courage and change alive, showing young people what it means to be true changemakers in their communities. So thank you again for recognizing this day and supporting the values of equity, courage, and community that Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day represents. Thank you. And would it be okay if we have the students come up to take a picture? Okay. Can everybody come up? Minji? Minji too.
Good job, guys.
You're great. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, good job. Oh yeah, good job. Totally cool. Thanks, thanks for coming. Thanks for the presentation.
And actually, before we move on to our next proclamation, if there's any public comment for item H1, the Ensignal Presentation, or H2, the Proclamation on Ruby Bridges, if you're in person, you can bring me that speaker card. If you're virtual, engage that hand feature. Calling in, you can press star nine now. This is a call for any comment on item H1 or H2. Right, seeing none, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, uh, City Clerk Karen. Um, and, and the kids are leaving, but another um, advice, have a good city clerk, cause I forgot to call for public comment. But the, the city clerk remembered. All right, we're gonna move on to H3, uh, proclamation, Native American Heritage Month. Uh, City Clerk Karen, can you please pa- call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if there's any member of the public who wishes to provide comment on H3, our proclamation recognizing Native American Heritage Month, if you are in person, returning that speaker card. If you're virtual, engage that hand feature. Calling in, press star nine now. Final call for public comment on our proclamation, H3. Seeing none, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, Clerk Karen. National Native American Heritage Month, celebrated annually in November, is a time to celebrate the traditions, language, and stories of Native American and Alaska Native communities and ensure their rich histories and contributions continue to thrive with each passing generation. This evening, we observe Native American Heritage Month by acknowledging that the city of Menlo Park, located on the ancestral homeland of the Alonee peoples, and that as the original source of this land, the Alonee understood the interconnectedness of all things and maintained harmony with nature for millennia. We'd like to invite Chairperson of the Ra'ma Tush Alonee Tribe, Dr. Jonathan Cordero, to accept the proclamation.
Was Dr. Cordero able to, and oh, it looks like we do have uh, virtually.
Oh, okay.
Perfect. All right, you should be able to unmute your mic.
Uh, well, good evening, everyone. I can't see myself, so I don't know if you can see me. Um, but again, good evening, Mayor Combs and council members. Um, I apologize for not being there in person. As you can imagine, Native American Heritage Month is a very busy time for us. Um, I'm also sorry that I missed that fantastic presentation by the fifth graders. That was great. Um, but on behalf of the Ra'ma Tush Tribe and um, Native American, uh, Native Americans and Alaska Natives, um, I accept the proclamation from the people of Menlo Park. Thank you all very much and have a good evening.
Thank you so much.
Great, thanks. Uh, the final item in presentation and proclamation is, is H4, Kepler's seventieth anniversary. City Clerk Karen, can you please call for a public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, any member of the public wishing to provide comment on H4 or proclamation recognizing Kepler's seventieth anniversary, if you're in person, return that speaker card. Calling in, star nine. Virtual, please engage that hand now. All right, final call for public comment on item H4. Seeing none, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, this year, we celebrate the seven- seventieth anniversary of Kepler's book, "A beloved community space, small business, and industry leader amongst booksellers across the United States." Kepler's continues to evolve and grow since its founding from a twenty twelve restructuring and launch of the Kepler's Twenty Twenty Program to its Living Wage Initiative and reimagining, reimagining Bookstores Project, thinking big while also remaining a local, accessible Menlo Park staple. We'd like to invite Kepler's Program Manager for Premier Events, Heather Burchall, to accept the proclamation.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm so delighted to receive this proclamation on behalf of Kepler's. So I'd been living in the Bay Area for at least a year before someone said to me, "Have you been to Kepler's yet? It's that brilliant bookstore in Menlo Park." I couldn't believe that whole year had gone by and I'd missed this treasure trove. So that weekend, we packed the kids in the car and drove from my house in Sunnyvale to Menlo Park. We bought as many books as we could carry and then we curled up um, at Cafe Brune to celebrate our purchases. After that, we regularly made the drive and realizing that I could see some of my favorite authors, I signed up for the newsletter and began attending events. And two years ago, I was lucky enough to become the events manager for Kepler's. In these past couple of years, I've discovered that Kepler's isn't just a place where people come to buy their next favorite book, though. It's a place where people get together to share ideas, to make friends, and talk about everything that's happening in the world, both the scary things and the wonderful things. There have been many surprises in this role. I had no idea that people came from so far to attend to our events. We had people queuing up from Idaho um, to attend our event with Rick Ryden and Marcus Shiro um, earlier this year. We've had many celebrations, most spectacularly our seventieth birthday party, which has just been mentioned. Um, we had a cake the size of a tank. Um, six hundred people showed up to gobble it up. Our mission is to keep being that place where people gather, celebrate, and discover the books that will change their lives, sometimes just for a moment and other times forever. And now I get the pleasure of saying to people who have just moved to the Bay Area, "Have you been to Kepler's yet? It's this brilliant bookstore in Menlo Park." Thank you very much.
We'll move on to the consent calendar. Under, under the consent calendar, the city council may take action to approve routine business items in one motion unless a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public requests that an item be discussed or continued to a later date. City Clerk Karen, can you call for public comment on the consent calendar?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our consent calendar item I1, city council meeting minutes. If you're in person, return that speaker card. Virtual, engage that hand feature. Calling in, press star nine now. Final call for public comment on our consent calendar item I1. Seeing none, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, um, so bringing it back to the dais, are there any questions? Um, or a motion on this item?
So I do have a motion on the floor by City Council Member Taylor and a second by Vice Mayor Nash to approve the consent calendar. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Clerk Karen. We'll move on to the public hearing. Public hearings are a formal proceeding held in order to receive testimony from all interested parties on a proposed issue or action. The first public hearing is waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance amending Title XII Buildings in Construction of the Menlo Park Municipal Code by adoption, by adopting by reference the Twenty Twenty Five California Building Standards Code, Title XXIV California Code of Regulations Parts One, Two, Two Point Five, Three, Four, Five, Six, Seven, Eight, Ten, Eleven, and Twelve, together with local amendments to Parts Two, Two Point Five, Five, Six, and Eleven. Here to introduce the item is Assistant Community Development Director Ron LaFrance.
Thank you. Uh, I'm sorry, I was laughing at all the numbers. Uh, okay, so I gotta do this thing here, boom. Oh, there we go. So the California Building Standards uh, code is updated every three years. Cities are allowed to adopt local amendments which need to be based on local, geologic, topographic, or climatic findings. City council unanimously voted to waive the first readings and to introduce the ordinance at the October twenty-first meeting. The proposed ordinance is inclusive of local amendments adopted in twenty twenty-two and amendments adopted in February and August of twenty twenty-five. Staff recommends waiving the second reading and adopting an ordinance that adopts the Twenty Twenty Five California Building Standards Code as the Building Code of Menlo Park, adopts local amendments to the Twenty Twenty Five California Building Standards Code, and accepts the cost-effectiveness study that demonstrates the proposed energy efficiency amendments are cost-effective. The effective date of the proposed ordinance, if adopted, will be January first, twenty twenty-six. Thank you, and staff is here to answer any questions you might have.
All right, thank you, uh, Mr. LaFrance. Uh, City Clerk Karen, let's call for public comment.
Okay, so we will go ahead and open the public hearing and take public comment on our first public hearing, J1, waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance related to the amendment of the Twenty Twenty Five California Building Code standards. If you are in person, return that speaker card. If you're virtual, engage that hand feature. Calling in, please press star nine now. This will be the final call for public comment on the first public, public hearing, J1. Seeing no hands or cards, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, Clerk Karen. So I'll bring it back to the, the dais. Again, this is the second reading. To see, oh wait. Yeah, any clarifying questions before we open the public hearing? So are there any clarifying questions before we open the public hearing? No. Okay, so I'd like to open the public hearing. Right, and so, um, and City Clerk Karen, do you have any public comment on this item?
Correct, we did not have any public comment. Thank you.
Okay, um, I say, so then, uh, so I'm closing the public hearing and I'll open it up for city council discussion. It is the second reading.
All right, so it looks like we do have a motion on the floor by Vice Mayor Nash and a second by City Council Member Wise to waive the second reading and adopt an ordinance amending Title XII of the Menlo Park Municipal Code by adopting by reference the Twenty Twenty Five California Building Standards Code, together with local amendments to Parts Two, Two Point Five, Five, Six, and Eleven. Any further city council question or discussion? Seeing none, please proceed with voting. And the motion passes with Mayor Combs dissenting.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to the next public hearing. Receive and file the certification of sufficiency of the petition for the proposed citizen initiative measure entitled Downtown Parking Plaza's Ordinance Initiative. This is not an action item. Um, it is only to receive and file uh, file for sufficiency of the petition. The city council will not take action on this um, on this agenda item. It will take action on Agenda Item J3. Um, here to introduce the item J2 is City Clerk Karen.
Thank you, Mayor Combs and members of the city council. The item before you this evening is a receive and file item accepting the certification of the sufficiency of the petition for the proposed initiative measure entitled Downtown Parking Plaza's Ordinance. According to the election code, it requires the city elections official to certify the results provided by the County of San Mateo Officer, Office of the Assessor, County Clerk Records and Elections, which is provided as Attachment A, determining that the proposed initiative has enough signatures to qualify for the ballot. For some background, on May fifteenth of twenty twenty-five, the initiative proponents submitted a notice of intent to circulate a petition and the city attorney's office prepared the ballot title and summary, which was provided to the proponents on May twenty-ninth. The proponents published a notice of intent June second and filed an affidavit of publication with the city clerk June ninth. On October tenth, the petition bearing three thousand nine hundred and twenty-eight unverified signatures was submitted to the elections official. And on October twentieth, the county notified the city that two thousand two hundred signatures had been verified, which exceeds the minimum number of signatures uh, to qualify the petition. The city clerk has determined that the initiative qualifies for the ballot. There is no action required for the, the city council for this item. As the mayor stated, the next agenda item, J3, the city council will provide uh, direction and action on the next steps for the initiative. So that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions uh, the city council may have or open it up to public comment.
Are there any clarifying questions for the city clerk from the council? Okay, I'd like to uh, open up the public hearing. As a reminder, this item is related to the petition signature certification. If you wish to make comments on the signatures, please do so now. If your comments are on the initiative, the substantive issue of the initiative, please wait until the next agenda item, uh, J3. City Clerk Karen, call for public comment on this item.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. So for any member of the public wishing to provide comment on item J2, receive and file the certificate of sufficiency. If you are in person, return that speaker card. If you're virtual, engage that hand feature. Calling in, please press star nine now.
This, this isn't, uh, you, you can, we're calling for a public comment. You can ask your question during public comment. Uh, if you submit to the city, city clerk, yes.
Yes. So there's cards right over there. Just, uh, just your name is sufficient. Thank you. All right, so this is the final call for public comment on item J2 related to certification of the sufficiency of the petition. All right, so I do have two speakers. That'd be our second speaker. Um, we will start with Jenny Michelle. We will start with Jenny Michelle.
Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members, and honorable staff, I'm Jenny Michelle, a native living in District 3, a recovering homeless teacher and a commercial property manager by trade. Although I know this item is a formality to receive and file the cert of sufficiency, I am dreadfully sad. We just hosted the state of the city last week, and it really just didn't highlight the difficult crossroad that our city is at. I've lived on the streets homeless as a teacher here in Menlo Park. Yep, me, take a good look. And that was 20 years ago. I still act chronically homeless. Even last week, I slept on the floor all night long because I felt really comfortable doing that. I offer a moment of silence to mourn for our residents and our stakeholders who are housing unstable. Today is a day of mourning. Deep sadness for our young people who don't want to be tethered to a vehicle lifestyle or a future with an unstable planet and planetary systems. Thank you, staff, always for your work. If you've never felt loved, know that I radiate love from all my molecules to yours. Jenny from the block.
Our next speaker will be Jenna Sweeney.
Hi, I have one question. There were 3,000, over 3,000 names on the petition.
Would you mind getting just a tad closer to the mic? Thank you.
There were over 3,000 signatures on the petition, but only 2,000 were certified? Did they just stop certifying when they had enough? Or they did?
Well, let the city clerk formally answer.
Yeah, does that conclude the question?
That's the question.
Yes, so the county only certifies enough to exceed the max and then they stop counting.
The others were all...
Yeah, they were definitely submitted, but yeah, they weren't, they didn't get through. They didn't get through the verification process as needed.
No one looked at them.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's...
All right. I'm seeing no further hands or cards for the certification items. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, Clerk Karen. I will now close the public hearing and open, oh, no. Yeah, so we are, is there any council discussion on this item? Okay, with that, we'll, we'll go on to the final public hearing. It is determination of action pursuant to Elections Code Section 9215 regarding the proposed initiative measure entitled Downtown Parking Plaza's Ordinance. Here to introduce the item is City Attorney Neera Doherty.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the city council. Following certification of the sufficiency of the petition, which is the, what just occurred in the previous agenda item, the Elections Code Section 9215 requires the city council choose, choose from one of the three following courses of action. First, the city council may adopt the ordinance that is contained in the initiative measure that's before the council this evening without alteration. That adoption can occur at tonight's meeting, the same meeting at which the certification of the petition is presented, or within 10 days after tonight's meeting. Alternatively, the city council can submit the ordinance without alteration to the voters at a special or a general election. And the third option is to order a report pursuant to Elections Code Section 9212. And I'll briefly explain each of the three options and then turn it over to the council for questions. The first is to adopt an ordinance, adopt the ordinance outright. If the city council elects to adopt the ordinance, in 30 days following adoption of the ordinance, the new Title 17, Chapter 1701, which is the proposed ordinance in the initiative measure, would be added to the city's municipal code. If the city elects to submit the measure to the voters, it can do so at the city's next general municipal election pursuant to the Elections Code. The next general municipal election is November 3rd, 2026. Alternatively, the city can call a special election to submit the initiative to the voters. If the city calls a special election, the election must be held on a Tuesday at least 88 days after the call of the election, but no more than 103 days. So it would have to be 88 to 103 days after the city calls a special election. Lastly, the city can order an Elections Code Section 9212 report. The Section 9212 report has a number of topics that are set forth by statute in the Elections Code. Those topics can be addressed and studied. The city council can direct fewer of those topics or additional topics. Those topics include, again, but are not limited to, the initiative's fiscal impact, its effect on consistency of the city's general and specific plans, its effect on the use of land, its impact on funding for infrastructure, its impact on the community's ability to attract and retain business and employment, its impact on the uses of vacant parcels, its impact on agricultural lands, open space, traffic, and business districts, and any other matters the legislative body requests to be in the report. Pursuant to the Elections Code, the city council does have an obligation to take one of the three or four, because there are two options for submitting the measure to the voters, at tonight's meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions about any of these options.
Is there any, are there any clarifying questions from the city council before we open the public hearing? So I have a couple of clarifying questions. Generally, it's understood that a future council can undo anything that a current council does. So if the current council made a decision to adopt this initiative, proposed initiative as an ordinance, could then a future council just undo it based on a majority vote of a future council?
The, the future council could not. So initiative measures that are adopted by the city council are considered measures adopted by the voters, and the council cannot undo that ordinance in the same way that a measure that is submitted to the voters and passes cannot be undone by a vote of the city council.
Okay, so thanks for that answer. So there are three broad strokes actions before the council. It could request the 9212 report, call for an election or adopt the ordinance. And it's my understanding that like it can only do one of those three, but so if the council decided to submit the proposed ordinance to voters, could it then, though, call for something similar to a 9212 report, but not necessarily a 9212 report, but just a, you know, a report to gather and provide information to voters? But then, again, doesn't really follow the line of the 9212 report, which it doesn't have to do if, right, if it's, if it's, if it makes the decision to put the ordinance to voters?
Yeah, that's how I would recommend doing it because the statute does say the legislative body shall do one of the following. And so if the council wanted more in for objective information on the measure, in the same way that the report, the 9212 report would be structured, city staff could come back with a report that is technically not a 9212 report, but contains the similar objective information.
All right, thank you. Are there any clarifying questions for the city attorney? Councilmember Schmidt?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. As I understand it as well, the county doesn't pay for the cost of elections the city does. Do you have a sense, or could you outline the cost of a special election versus the regular, the general election, just so we have a sense of cost?
Yes, so we, the city does pay the county to hold its elections. We did receive a quote from the county on the cost for a special election for the initiative measure versus placing the measure on the city's general municipal election, November 2026. Placing the measure on the November 2026 general election would be negligible, essentially zero is what the county told us, because the city already has to consolidate with the November 2026 election for the three council seats that will be up. So for those three council seats, it will cost the city approximately $7,000 to $80,000, and I'll look to the city clerk if that's changed at all. And to add the initiative to that, it would cost no more. A special election presumably in February or March would cost 315,000, sorry, 315,000 to 378,000 is the estimate that the county gave us.
Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other questions from the dais, I'd like to open the public hearing. City Clerk Karen, can you call for public comment on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on our public hearing, J3, determination of action related to the proposed initiative, Downtown Parking Plaza's Ordinance. If you are in person and have not already, go ahead and submit that speaker card. If you're virtual, engage the hand feature. And calling in, press star nine now. Right, we are currently at 24 speakers, so this is the final call to get in queue for public comment on item J3, which is the determination of action regarding the proposed initiative. Okay, so it looks like we are holding at that 24. Mayor Combs confirming 1:30, 1 minute 30 seconds?
Well, we'll limit each comment to 1 minute and 30 seconds.
Thank you. So our first speaker will be Prudence Pingray, followed by Mary Seaton.
Good evening, city council members, Mayor Drew Combs and Vice Mayor Betty Nash. I constitute a Menlo Park, and I am here in full support of your decision to implement low-market housing in the downtown parking plazas. First, as a user of the low-market housing, I speak from direct experience. The scarcity of affordable housing options in the region severely limits the ability of individuals working here, including those who serve our downtown businesses, cultural institutions, and service economy, to live near where they work. By bringing housing into the downtown core, the city acknowledges that housing access and economic vitality go hand in hand. Second, the anticipated increase in foot traffic and local population will directly support downtown business profitability. With more people living within walking distance of the shops, restaurants, and service providers on Santa Cruz Avenue and adjacent streets, those businesses will enjoy a larger, stable customer base. That customer base is not limited to residents of Menlo Park alone. By improving the attractiveness and accessibility of downtown as a living, working, and social destination, we will draw in more people from neighboring cities and counties who are looking for a vibrant urban-village experience. The net result will be more spending, more demand for services, and more opportunity for local businesses to grow. I expect that everyone who will speak against this housing initiative will say that we do not need affordable housing, not just here in their backyard. They do not want the people that serve them coffee every morning, the teachers who teach their kids, the city workers who make this glorious city run so measly live in our backyard. The opposition is phrased as save our downtown parking spaces, save our downtown parking spaces, is downtown that area that is suffering from vacancy and desperately needs foot traffic. But let's not ignore what the opposition is really saying. They're saying, not in my backyard. They do not want the people of lower incomes that, those who serve them, to live near them. Please do not adopt the downtown parking plaza...
Last I heard, I was the mayor. I will call time. Thank you, but I will ask that you respect. I was giving you some, some leeway since you're first, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker will be Mary Seaton, followed by Keith Quiggins. Mary, were you able to stay in chambers? Okay, we will move on to Keith, followed by Nicole Chemney.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I support adopting the proposed citizens' initiative Downtown Parking Plaza Ordinance Initiative. Adopting the ordinance tonight will save the city hundreds of thousands of dollars, as we've already heard, avoiding the time-consuming and costly vote. This will allow the city council to move forward with other proposed properties for affordable housing, fulfilling the state's mandate without harming the downtown business district. Strengthening the downtown with street, streetscape updates and a facade abatement program can attract new businesses as well as shoppers. Thank you.
Next speaker will be Nicole Chemney, followed by Holden Weisman.
Good evening, Mayor Combs and city council. Thank you for letting me speak here as a resident of Menlo Park and also as a climate advocate. And given my background in urban planning and climate advocacy, I really support the housing initiative wholeheartedly, and I would urge people to think about all of the benefits that we stand to gain. I think that while we know people are very nervous about change, and I think part of the reason for that is that they can picture exactly what might, what they may lose, but they can't picture exactly what they may gain. And I would urge people to consider that we could have a wonderfully vibrant downtown that would be really fun and lovely for everybody. We could have people who don't have to spend so many hours in their car commuting to work here, but can spend more time with their families. We can have teachers who can actually afford to live here and therefore don't leave the school because of the unmanageable commutes. And we can reduce our greenhouse gas emissions dramatically by reducing the drive times for the people that have to travel long distances from affordable housing markets to come here to work. So I would urge everybody to consider we have much to gain. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Holden Weisman, followed by Laura Melhan. Melon, apologies.
Thank you, Mayor Combs and the city council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all today. My name is Holden Weisman. I am from HEPDA for Humanity Greater San Francisco. We have a long history of building here in Menlo Park, all 100% affordable homes for ownership. What we do is we help families lay roots in the towns where they are currently living and trying to get by, but have the opportunity to become lifelong and multigenerational families in their own communities. With this in mind, it's incredibly important for us to make sure that the council has a full understanding of what the impact of an initiative like this would mean for the ability to continue to produce affordable homes and affordable homes for ownership here in Menlo Park. This would have a significant impact on our ability to produce homes like we do. It would prevent new homeowners from, new affordable homeowners from joining an already vibrant downtown community and contributing to their own community in which they already live. We strongly encourage you to take the time to seek a report that would thoroughly understand what the impact that this initiative would have on affordable housing and the ability to produce affordable housing here in Menlo Park. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker will be Laura Milan, followed by Alex Patrongo.
All right, good to see you guys. I'm Laura Milan, Vice Chair of the Finance and Audit Commission, speaking out on my own behalf. There's an old saying that I like, when you find your... There's an old saying that I like, "When you find yourself in a hole, stop digging." Given the options before us tonight, our housing element needs to be amended to keep Menlo Park in good standing with the state and producing the housing we need while avoiding builder's remedy. The downtown parking lot plan simply isn't working. It's dividing the community, wasting time, and slowing real progress on housing. In our third Housing Element rejection, HCD warned us not to rely on risky strategies like submitting only the downtown parking lots as city-owned sites. Instead of changing course, we doubled down, and now we're facing tough choices. If we adopt the ordinance or send it to a vote, which we're required to do tonight or in a month, without fixing our housing element, we open the door to state enforcement and paying a redundant $165,000 won't fix the problem and consumes more than one-third of our entire annual downtown budget. The real fix is to amend the housing element and focus on the addition of realistic, buildable sites. It's time to move forward, not dig deeper. There's already a plan for this situation in our Certified Housing Element Program H1H. This next step is exactly the kind of collaborative revision HCD expects and encourages when things aren't going according to plan. Thank you for all your work for the city.
Our next speaker will be Alex Beltramo, followed by Carrie Nicholas.
Good evening, City Council. Over the last months, I've gone door-to-door across Menlo Park, and I can tell you without a doubt that the people in Menlo Park want to be able to vote on the future of their downtown. They don't want to vote on everything. Nobody wants that. But they do want to vote on this. But they don't want to vote twice. Having a first election just to decide whether there's a second election will create up to a year of delay, unless we pay for the other election, which is, that's fine, but a year of delay. During that year, businesses aren't going to renew their leases. The housing is going to be stalled, and Menlo Park will be divided. There's a better way. Adopt the ordinance tonight, in the next 10 days, but adopt it. Then in December, developers do submit their proposals as scheduled. January and February, city staff analyzes the proposals, makes recommendations. If there's a proposal that council wants to implement, you put it on the June or the November ballot. Then council and staff and any consultants you want to hire can make the case to the voters. If you believe the proposal is good for the downtown, explain why. If you believe there are no better alternatives, make that argument. If you believe there are serious consequences to not moving forward, lay out those consequences. And then based on what you tell us and on reviewing an actual proposal, the people vote. Once the people in Menlo Park make their decision, we move forward together, either with the proposal or with alternatives. But either way, the uncertainty ends and we get back on track.
I'm gonna ask you to wrap up.
Yes.
Sorry. Doing that is not us getting in your way. That's representative government working the way it should. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Carrie Nicholas, followed by Sheri Zosowski.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I think that the main problem here is we have this division. Menlo Together, Save Downtown. Save Downtown, Create Low-Income Housing. We are on the same team. I don't know how this division started. It started because they wanted to take away the businesses, the parking lot, the infrastructure. Menlo Together and Save Downtown can work together. If we look at other sites, why does it have to be all in one place? That, I think, is the most frustrating part for me. We don't feel like you are hearing us. We have, I have spoken so many times, I've had two conversations, I have spent so much time on this, emails, trying to get meetings. I have met with two of you who have made time, and I do appreciate that, but we just want you to hear us. I think that's the biggest thing. We do not have the money, and how many more million-dollar studies will you perform at the taxpayers' expense when our own fire marshal says this cannot be done? Look at the alternative sites, while including some of the downtown if needed. We can repurpose vacant buildings. No one is saying not to do that. It's not an us versus them. I am so disheartened to see what the council is not hearing. The Menlo Park residents are watching. They are listening. I wish more would speak. They talk to me about it, but they don't speak at the meetings. They do send emails, I do know that. We all complain about Trump acting like a king, but there is a threat to dismiss the democratic process by not putting this up for a vote. Thank you.
Next speaker is Sheri Zosowski, followed by Ben.
Thank you, council members. Mayor Combs and council members, Sheri Zosowski, longtime resident of the downtown. So you may recall the musical My Fair Lady. There's a song in that musical called "Show Me." And tonight, I'd like you to show us that you hear us, to show us, and you would do that by adopting the proposed ordinance now, which puts us on the fast track, as several people have mentioned, to getting through this stuckness over what's going to happen with the downtown parking lots. If you go ahead and adopt it now, we have one election in November, 12 months, $70,000. If you drag your feet, and we have the study, if you do the study, plus the election in November, plus a second special election, you'll be spending $623,000 of our city money, and you'll be taking 18 months instead of 12 months. So I really want to see you take that action tonight by adopting the ordinance. And if you're going to do the study, the 9212 report, please pay special attention to numbers five and seven. Number five, its impact on the community's ability to attract and retain businesses and employment. And you have to give the proposed ordinance an A-plus on that because the whole point is to protect our businesses, retain them, and retain the employees who work in our city. Please do the right thing tonight, council members. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Von Cozujian, followed by Catherine Dumont.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, council members. The legal counsel for the proponents of the initiative have submitted a letter to City Council, which I will now read in summary for the record. Dear Mayor Combs and council members, if the council elects to use its authority under sections 9215 and 9212 of the California Elections Code to have the city commission a report, we request that the report include a fair and impartial evaluation of the following issues related to the possible redevelopment of the downtown parking plazas, business viability and economic impacts on downtown merchants and property owners, risk of litigation, including potential claims related to business access and viability, parking availability and downtown access, including ADA accessibility, traffic circulation, congestion, and emergency response access, fire safety and evacuation implications, soil and environmental contamination risks associated with redevelopment of the parking plazas, school capacity and projected enrollment impacts, financial exposure to the city, including legal costs, mitigation costs, infrastructure costs, and potential lost tax revenue. The request of the initial, of the proponents is simple. If the council chooses to have a section 9212 report prepared, that the report is a fair, thorough, and balanced analysis of the initiative. The community deserves nothing less. Sincerely, Rutan and Tucker, James Sutton Attorney. Thank you.
Next speaker is Catherine Dumont, followed by Sean Vandrill.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, Vice Mayor Nash, and council. Catherine Dumont, Menlo Park resident. I'm here, I'm on the Housing Commission, but I'm here on my own tonight as a resident to encourage you to select the option to do the study so that the city and the voters have a full understanding of the implications of the ballot measure and what it would do to, like the Habitat for Humanity speaker said, what it would do to the affordable housing supply, what it would, and then also what Menlo Together and Housing Leadership Council have put in their letter about the, what it would do to our standing on our housing implementation and what risks might be forthcoming from the state. So, thank you.
Next speaker will be Sean Vandrill, followed by Emma Stanford.
Hello, City Council. My name is Sean Vandrill. I live on Florence Lane, Menlo Park resident. I wanted to say I'm supportive of the study, one. Two, I wanted to elevate the story of musicians as it relates to housing. I'm a musician, and I have a number of friends who are, work as professional musicians. I asked a close friend of mine, "How do housing costs impact your life as a professional musician?" This is a working drummer, works in theater, does jazz. This is his quote, "Housing costs impact musicians just like anyone else who doesn't make a lot of money. Even for talented or successful musicians, it doesn't always add up to a living wage, and most of us live and work in expensive cities because that's where the opportunities are. What people might not realize is that many musicians end up paying rent twice, once for a place to live and again for a studio or space to practice. So we already don't make a lot of money. Rents are high, and it's hard to find roommates who can handle someone practicing music at home. I've known plenty of musicians who have had to leave the area because they just couldn't afford to stay. If you don't have to spend, if you don't have to spend so much on housing, you can afford the space you need to do your work, and you don't need a second job just to get by. That means more time to make music, plan events, and build the community's art scene. Those things don't happen when people are overworked or priced out to participate. Building housing is good for art. Thank you."
The next speaker is Emma Stanford, followed by Will Alsler.
Good evening, Mayor Combs, City Council members. I've brought some of my coworkers up here with me because we are librarians and archivists working at Stanford University, and the issue of affordable housing speaks directly to us. We didn't get into this career to make a lot of money, but living in Menlo Park as a librarian is not easy. Some of our colleagues commute from the East Bay or from San Jose, some work remotely from other states. Generally, there's an understanding that people stay here for a few years and then they leave because they want to start a family or buy a home, and they know they can't do those things here. And that has a really negative impact on our profession, but also on our town. I'm saying that as somebody who is standing here eight months pregnant, and I do hope to start a family here, but it has taken sacrifices and a lot of privilege for me to be able to do that, and I, I wish that all of my colleagues and all the people in Menlo Park had the same opportunity. We are disappointed that a small but well-resourced group is making it so difficult to modernize parking and build affordable housing downtown. We urge the council to commission an impact study, and particularly to commission a study that includes the report elements recommended by Menlo Together, so that voters have the necessary information about the consequences of this vague and potentially very costly ballot measure and can make the right choice for our town. Let's make Menlo Park a place to grow and put down roots, not just a place to pass through. Thank you.
Next speaker is Will Alsler, followed by Nick Mers.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Will Alsler. I'm on the Housing Commission, but tonight I'm speaking only as a private resident of District Three. We're here tonight because a ballot measure has been proposed, and supporters of this measure want you to adopt it directly without studying and without letting voters decide. I care a lot about affordable housing because I've seen many of my friends and coworkers choose to move away from the area to start their families instead of being able to do so here, like they, they really should be. And I'm deeply aware that I come from a cohort that has a lot of privilege and ability, so I can't imagine how much harder it must be for all of the folks in the careers behind me. I think it's really unfortunate that we're in this position tonight. I think this ballot measure ignores the years of public process, the multiple city councils and elections, and the thousands of hours of work done by very talented people that came to the conclusion that Project H4G was best served by redeveloping the downtown parking lots. I believe this ballot measure serves the interests of a few by sorely delaying needed housing for years. Tonight, I'm asking the City Council to direct preparation of a report on its impact. Particularly concerned about the requirement that the city fund potentially very costly appeals if this law is challenged. And I had asked that you put it on the ballot for November 2026. I think it serves the community best if it's heard by all residents of Menlo Park. Thank you.
Next speaker will be Nick Mers, followed by Tom Enger.
Hi, my name's Nick. I'm a resident of Menlo Park, relatively new. I moved here, I built a house on Santa Margarita and moved here with my wife and kids in 2019. And I'm here tonight to advocate for option three, for the City Council to study this initiative further. But more generally, I'm here to advocate for more housing downtown. I think it's easy for rich suburban guys like myself to think that we can kind of keep the housing crisis at arm's length if we hire a lawyer and just sort of push back against it, but it's really not true. And I learned this the hard way. Two years ago, my older brother, who's a choreographer and runs a ballet studio, he went through a messy divorce and lost his house, lost his business, and I was fortunate enough that I built an ADU in the backyard, and he lived there for a year. And it wasn't just him. While he was living there, there was a family of three living in a green minivan, and they liked to park in front of my house. The kid had autism, the dad worked for the city. So it's here already. It's already a crisis, and it's a crisis in Menlo Park. And I know it's scary to invite new people into our community, into the heart of downtown, but it brings vibrance, and it's going to bring new life, and it's going to be good for us. And thank you.
Next speaker will be Tom Enger, followed by Jenny Michelle.
Hi, my name is Tom Enger. I'm a member of the Board of the League of Women Voters of South San Mateo County, and I'm speaking on its behalf, along with some of my, you know, other board members here. I am here to communicate the League's position, opposition of the Downtown Parking Plazas Ordinance. The reasons we oppose the proposed ordinance are: We support new housing and advocate for additional affordable housing. We support higher densities along major transportation routes. We encourage robust public engagement regarding potential zoning changes. The mission of the League of Women Voters is to make democracy work and to support effective representative democracy. We do not support taking away from the elected City Council representatives the responsibility to make zoning changes and instead put zoning changes to a public vote. This ordinance reduces the effectiveness of city government, increases costs, and delays the delivery of needed additional housing. Election requirements are a barrier to new housing and thereby can increase the cost and uncertainty of housing proposals. Our League believes Menlo Park needs new housing and therefore needs to avoid barriers and added costs to housing production. All of these reasons are in alignment with our longstanding position favoring housing, effective representative democracy, and public engagement. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker will be Jenny Michelle, followed by Jen Mazone.
Dear Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council members, and honorable staff, I'm Jenny Michelle, native, living in District Three, recovering homeless teacher, commercial property manager by trade, known as a business ma'am. Personal comments. by trade, known as a business ma'am. Personal comments: I support the recommendation C, or ordering the study and report of the impacts of the ballot initiative. Housing program H4G is one of the main reasons why our sixth housing element was certified, because it fosters affirmatively furthering fair housing in resource-rich areas. Although we are already behind on our timeline on this program, the ballot initiative might entirely derail it. By defaulting on those terms that we binded ourselves to, the residents and council need to fully understand those consequences. We need to see the stark black and white terms that we would live with, what happens, and how much will it cost. SB 79 has direct implications to our downtown area. The Menlo Park Caltrain Station is a transit hub that is affected by the new law. The study should also touch on this new state statute and the dynamic that it sets up. Also, my understanding is that the election has to be in November 2026. There is no option for this special election. And lastly, as a member of the business community who represents literally billions of dollars' worth of investments in this region, I support housing workers, families, and people who in resource-rich areas like our downtown, and I support stabilizing our various assets. Thank you.
Next speaker will be Jen Mazone, followed by Patrick Reed.
Good evening. My name is Jen Mazone, and I live in the Willows. I urge you to call for an objective report on this matter. I grew up in Menlo Park and have raised three kids here. I urge you furthermore to push forward with affordable housing inclusive of the downtown sites. We have a median home price of over 2.7 million, and 3.2 jobs for every one employed resident, which forces many folks to commute into our city because they cannot afford to live here, and others onto the streets. Building affordable housing units in downtown near transit and shops will certainly help us meet our state mandated goals. I think it will also bring new life to our downtown, support our local businesses with more foot traffic, and cut down on the traffic that clogs our streets every day. We have a choice to be a city that is only for the very wealthy, or we can be a vibrant, diverse, and complete community. Let's choose to be a completed community. Thank you.
Next speaker is Patrick Reed, followed by Alisa Germin.
Thank you, City Council, for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Patrick Reed. I've been a resident of Menlo Park on and off since 1994. I want to begin my comments by saying, congratulations and a special shout out to the Ensigne students who were here earlier tonight, as the former Student Council President for Ensigne back in 2005. As a fifth grader, I'm always happy to see Ensigne Eagles get involved in local politics and the political process. I want to speak tonight in opposition to the ballot measure and in support of affordable housing in Menlo Park. Having lived here, on and off since 1994, I know how valuable it is to have those who are firefighters, police officers, municipal workers, nurses, government workers, those who generally couldn't afford to live in Menlo Park nowadays, live in the city alongside us. When I was growing up, we had municipal employees and teachers who were living on my blocks, that nowadays, the housing price is what they are, where my parents lived in the Willows, would be unimaginable. Ultimately, we're under the gun here. We need to build over 2,900 units by 2031, or else we face possible builder's remedies and state enforcements. New housing will come to Menlo Park whether we want it or not. It's just a matter of how and with what control. Ultimately, by supporting the, by supporting the affordable housing plan in place and opposing the ballot measure, we ensure we can have sustainable growth in Menlo Park, affordable housing that works with everyone, without having the state come in and provide builder's remedies that open Menlo Park up to whatever the state feels the town should look like. This is a reasonable proposal to build on top of the parking lots, and I would appreciate if Menlo Park City Council would ensure that this plan moves forward and opposes putting the ballot measure on the ballot next year's election. Thank you.
Next speaker is Alisa Germin, followed by Rob Foster.
Hi, I grew up here in Menlo Park, and I went to-
Am I getting a little closer to the mic? Thank you.
I grew up here in Menlo Park. I went to Laurel, Ensigne, Hillview, and MA. But during my, during high school, my family was priced out of this area. My family could not afford enough bedrooms in the school district, so some days I slept on a couch here in Menlo Park, and others I commuted to school back and forth from San Jose, often up to an hour each way in traffic. Mornings were rough, so housing in Menlo Park is personal to me. I believe that people matter more than cars, and this project will benefit many, many people. We need housing for people in all careers, like the ones shown there, families that can send their kids to our great schools, like the fifth graders that were here earlier, young professionals, students, and people of all ages. Directly adopting this vague language could be dangerous without a deep understanding of what it means, what it means to the community, environment, businesses, and more. I urge the council to support this project and vote to do an impact study, including the additional questions listed in Menlo Together's letter sent to the council prior to this meeting, to ensure that this project is in compliance and will benefit the greatest number of people. Thank you.
Next speaker is Rob Foster, followed by Karen Grove.
Hello, and Happy Election Day. I hope, I hope you guys had a chance to vote. That's your right, and obviously your responsibility. I'm here tonight to respectfully ask that City Council adopt the Downtown Parking Plaza's ordinance. The alternate, alternative is to force voters to vote on whether the voters should vote on the possible use of the parking plaza. That sounds kind of crazy. There are a couple of other good reasons to adopt the ordinance. First, adopting the ordinance is faster, and you've told us how important it is to move fast. Second, adopting the ordinance is cheaper, and you've told us how important the money is. And finally, on Election Day, today, do you really want to tell voters that they have to vote on whether they should be allowed to vote? That sounds crazy. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Karen Grove, followed by Jennifer Schindler.
Please, no comments from the audience.
Good evening. I am Karen Grove, speaking on behalf of Menlo Together and our partners, Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County. We strongly support your efforts to add much-needed affordable homes and parking and access innovations to downtown Menlo Park's parking plazas. We encourage you, and specifically using the city-owned land, which is our parking plazas. We urge you to commission a study as allowed by Election Code 9212, to understand the full impacts of this vague and costly ballot measure, that what the impacts would be on our city. The proponents are not trained planners, they're not economists, they're not elected by the community, and many don't even live in Menlo Park. So it is essential that the city fully understand the potential impacts this measure would have on Menlo Park residents now and in the future. In the letter we submitted earlier, we proposed some questions that we urge you to include in the study to inform your decision and the decision of voters when they weigh in. And I would add that I think you should do an Election 9212 report, and if there isn't time to study additional questions, do a regular city impact study as well, or simultaneously, and that one doesn't have a deadline. So, I hope you consider that. I hope we become a city that is even more vibrant and inclusive with homes for everyone, regardless of their income or ability. Thank you.
Next speaker is Jennifer Schindler, followed by a Zoom user, iPad six.
Good evening, Council. I am Jennifer Schindler, D5 resident and member of the city's Planning Commission, but tonight I am speaking as an individual resident. Of the options presented by staff, ordering a report on the impacts of the ballot measure is the best of the three. City Council and residents alike need more information. We need data-supported analysis from sources with true expertise. We do not need subjective opinions projected forward as if they were objective truths. I want to see detailed scenarios from experienced experts laying out what might happen in two or three years, or in 10 or 20 years, if this ballot measure becomes law. Additionally, if council does eventually submit the ballot measure to voters, I recommend, please, doing so at a general municipal election rather than a special election, in order to reduce costs and ensure the highest level of voter engagement. Thank you for your service.
Our next speaker is an iPad user. We should be able to unmute your end at this time.
Hi.
Yes, yes, go right ahead.
Hi, this is Mary Seaton.
Thank you, Mary.
Hi. As a Menlo Park homeowner and supporter of our downtown district, I wanted to share a few questions and concerns regarding the possible decision to allocate $169,000 for a consultant study. While I fully understand and respect that it is within the council's right to engage an independent consultant to provide objective information about the potential impacts of the ballot initiative on the city's operations, finances, and services, I would like to express some concern regarding the allocation of taxpayer money to this consultant as the necessity of the spending is not entirely clear. I believe it's important for the community to have clarity about how this process will be conducted. Specifically, I hope that the council can share more information about the consultant's methodology and the scope of work. Will the study include an environmental impact report, parking analysis, a fiscal impact assessment? Additionally, will the public have access to the consultant's framework and assurances that the report will present a balanced and objective evaluation? Transparency in these matters would go a long way towards building trust and confidence among the residents and local businesses. I would also encourage that any study, particularly those related to parking and traffic, be conducted on days and times that accurately reflect typical conditions in our downtown area. This will ensure that the findings present an honest and realistic picture of the congestion and the parking availability. Above all, my greatest concern is that the voices of the community members and local retailers are genuinely heard and considered throughout the process. Providing clarity, transparency, and balance will give both residents and business owners peace of mind that their city leaders value their input and are committed to preserving the-
Ma'am, I'm going to ask you to wrap up. You're well over the allotted time.
I respectfully urge the City Council to take this opportunity to adopt the Downtown Parking Plaza ordinance in its entirety. Thank you.
And our next speaker will be Adina Levin.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and staff. Adina Levin, Menlo Park resident. And I do support the city's plans to have housing on the downtown parking lots. And given the current situation, would urge the City Council to commission a report to assess the impact of this ballot measure, were it to pass, including the impacts on the business environment in the downtown. You know, I suspect that it would be helpful to be able to have housing that would help downtown businesses to be able to retain workers, and to have more customers for the business, but I think having a study would be very helpful for that. I think it would be very important, along the lines of some of the items in the Menlo Together and Housing Leadership Council letter, to assess the legal impact to the city, including the consequences of the provision to have to fund an appeal if the law is challenged, as well as, you know, what is the impact to the city as it relates to state housing laws. Also, would urge the city to have the election in a general election and not to do a costly and low-turnout special election. And, uh, thank you very much.
We are seeing no further hands or cards. Mayor Combs, you may continue.
All right, thank you, Corr Karen, and thank you to everyone who provided public comment. I will now close the public hearing and open this item up for City Council discussion. Again, before diving into the discussion, the council has three broad options. This is an action item. It can adopt the ordinance, it can call for an election, either a, an election at the next regularly-held election, or at a special election, which I'm understanding. I know a public commenter said that they didn't think a special election could be held. The city attorney says differently, so I think I'm going to go with the city attorney. Or, or, or the, the council can make the decision to call for a, a specific report on, on the measure, which means that I'm at a date in the future, then after that report has been completed, it will then have before, two options. One, to either adopt the ordinance or to, to call for an election in relation to the ordinance. So with that framing, I'm happy to see where any council colleague would like to start the discussion. Or there are some, some questions for, for staff from? Sure.
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I can keep it short and sweet. I'm in favor of option three, ordering the report.
That is short and sweet.
So I will not be quite as short and sweet that come to the same conclusion. So, everyone seems to agree that Menlo Park has an affordable housing crisis. People who live and work in our community can't afford to rent, much less purchase a home here. This creates challenges for our community. I hear from people who are losing their rented home and unable to find another nearby. I hear from businesses who can't find workers to hire. Our kids who might want to work, live here, instead move away. I know that rising healthcare costs and prices of food and other day items add to the financial pressures. I also hear residents concerned about traffic, pedestrian and bicycle safety, parking, air quality, and traffic, traffic, traffic. Menlo Park has a state mandate to build or enable 1,662 affordable housing units before the end of 2031. The 345 affordable units that might be built downtown are only one-fifth of that requirement. Another 1,317 affordable units must be built in Menlo Park by the end of 2031 as well. And 1,284 so-called market-rate units must also be built. But it's almost 3,000 new housing units citywide to be built over the next five years. Finding sites for affordable housing is difficult. There is no simple solution. Last winter, Alex Beltramo and I spent weeks looking for alternative sites to replace the downtown lots, and came up empty. Alex thought some private property owners might be open to developing affordable housing. Unfortunately, none stepped up. And we can't just require a property owner to develop a project they don't want. Land for any project is expensive, which is why we are looking at using land the city already owns. There are many misconceptions about the potential use of downtown parking lots to build new parking and new affordable housing. We are looking for projects that replace public parking, as well as provide affordable housing and some residential parking. Our BMR ordinance gives priority in the affordable, to, in the affordable housing to people already living or working in Menlo Park. We all interact every day with many people who may be eligible for this housing, at downtown businesses, schools, and city services throughout Menlo Park. I believe opening new opportunities for them to live with less rent burden downtown, close to jobs, transit, good schools and services would be good for them, for our businesses, and for our community. So far, the city has requested proposals to see what that might look like. I hope everyone will evaluate the proposals we receive with an open mind and work together- and work together to make this project a success. I believe the best approach is to take the RFP proposals that are due December 15th and see what a downtown affordable housing solution that provides both affordable housing and replacement public parking would look like. No one wants to harm our downtown and downtown businesses. This housing would be a meaningful part of the state mandate. We will also be building housing on other sites. I believe all of us here on council are open to collaborating on viable solutions. As for the voter initiative, I want to learn more about it and how it could affect the state mandate to build affordable housing in our community. The voters will have their say and we will all move ahead. I hope everyone is able to vote on the basis of full information so we can make the best decisions for our future Menlo Park. No matter what, we will see change. We have a creative, brilliant, and generous Menlo Park community. We all want our downtown to thrive, and we want the city's affordable housing to succeed. With luck and working together, we can make the change something that makes us proud.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Wow, I don't know if I want to follow that. Thanks. Yeah, so I actually, that was amazing. I want to offer up a couple of things along similar lines. One is, like councilmember Wise, I really believe we need a study. What I would ask is that, I think there's two reasonable proposals. Mr. Sutton with Rutan and Tucker put forward eight ideas that I would ask the city to look at and study. And I think, as Ms. Grove said, if we can't get all of that in the timeframe, let's bring those issues back into a regular city impact study because I personally really want to understand all the impacts to business and any of those questions that we can answer. At the same time, I want to see that also from the letter put forward, the seven issues that were put forward from the Housing Leadership Council and from Menlo Together. You know, it's interesting, there have been a ton of emails that have come in over the last few days. Every single one of them says they support affordable housing. So if that is the truth, if that's not just words on paper, then I want to make sure we study both sides of this, the housing, the affordable housing impact point of view from HLC and Menlo Together and the folks who support the initiative. So that's kind of point number one. Point number two is, I will follow the Vice Mayor's lead here. I want to reframe what I think as a council member I've been experiencing and that we have been listening and we hear the residents. You may not believe that, but that is what I know to be true for myself. I think that residents are only hearing part of the story because this really isn't a discussion about downtown. This is also not really a discussion about affordable housing. We've made a commitment to the state. The previous council made that commitment, as has every city across the state. We have to honor that, otherwise the implications are a penalty like builder's remedy. And I will say that my district, I've heard from a lot of people in District Three who are not happy about some of the builder's remedies projects that are out there. And so, one of them being Sunset and Eighty Willow. I've listened to a lot of the feedback on that, and that is what builder's remedy, that is a builder's remedy project. So to be super clear, we've made a commitment. There's a state penalty for that, and I think people need to hear that part of the story. The other part of the story I think people need to hear is, this is one housing cycle. So we have about 3,000 units this housing cycle. The next housing cycle, we may have another 3,000 units that we have to build. And that's the hard truth about what the housing crisis really looks like. So this isn't about downtown. This is about downtown and other sites. And like the Vice Mayor, I've had multiple conversations with Alex and other residents to say that this is likely going to be downtown and these other sites. And the private sites are off the table. We don't have the ability to force property owners to build on those. That's just not how private land works. So I would really encourage everyone to take into account, you know, you may only be hearing one side of the story. I would say that we're hearing multiple sides of the story. I would encourage everybody to come spend time with your city council members. I think most of us do office hours. I know that I would be happy to talk to anybody in this room or online about the complexities of what this really looks like. It's not about downtown. It's not about affordable housing. There are bigger commitments that we have to meet, and there are penalties for not meeting those commitments. So thank you for letting me reframe that a little bit, but I think it's important, as the Vice Mayor said, to look at the bigger picture as we're having this discussion. So, thank you.
Right. Thank you, Councilmember Schmidt. Councilmember Taylor, did you want to?
Thank you, Mayor Combs, and I also want to thank my colleagues for sharing their thoughts, especially the Vice Mayor. I appreciate the statement that you put together, and I am in support of option C, calling for a report.
Okay, so we can make this quick. I'll share my thoughts and then ask for a motion. So I'll just share my thoughts and framing it as in relation to the three options that are for the council tonight. One option would be to adopt the ordinance. I don't understand how this is a viable and democratic step. My understanding of the effort that has been engaged in to collect signatures was about giving the residents of Menlo Park the opportunity to vote on whether they wanted to put this restriction on future councils, whether they want to remove this agency and the power that the council currently has from them and invest it in themselves, which they can do. I don't understand then why, how that would lead to the council deciding to adopt the ordinance. The issue is that the thing before the voters is the thing that, my understanding, that people signed when they signed their name in support of the ordinance or the ballot initiative, was that that would come to voters and not the idea that the council would just adopt it. And so for me, that isn't a viable option. And like I said, I don't understand and see it as even being democratic. The call for the 9212 report, again, my thought is that it's going to be a really costly report of limited value. For the things it says that are aligned with those people in support of the measure, they will use it and say that this is an example that the measure is good. For those people, for when it says something that aligns with the people who are opposed to the measure, they'll point to it and say, "Look, this is something in the report that backs up our position." I just don't see how it's going to provide any real value or it's going to change minds. I think we saw this with Measure V. People will see it as bias and discredit those aspects of the report that they don't like. And if it says something they don't like, and for those people where it says something they like, they'll say, "Look, this is validation for my position." And so, for like $160,000, that's a lot to bring us right back to the position that we would be in. And so for me, like, asking for the report is just kicking the can down the road. And it's a really expensive can. It's a $160,000 can. So I would rather make that decision tonight. And so my preference would be to call for the election. My preference at this moment would be for a special election. Again, I know that it is costly. Democracy sometimes is costly. Costly in time, costly in money, and costly in resources, but it is important. And so, I, again, understanding the cost, we would save ourselves the cost of this report that I think has of limited value and put that towards the special election. And so that is how I would vote and what I would support tonight. I don't think that that is where the majority of the council is, and so I won't be making the motion. But with that, I'll turn to see if there are council members who want to provide additional comments or who want to make a motion. Vice Mayor.
So I am curious how you, how do we get information for voters? How do we get information for residents to make a decision with facts?
Well, I think, again, there is a process when something is on the ballot. You'll have statements from proponents. You'll have statements for those supporting it. And I think that that's, there are going to, I'm not saying that there are no objectable facts. They certainly exist, but they will be seen in the light that people want to see them. And so I would prefer that, like, that just be a part of the understanding of the political discourse that happens versus trying to couch a voice in this discussion as being impartial, as being in some way unbiased. Again, like I said, if this report is to have any value, it will make some determinations. And if that aligns with where people are, then again, like I said, they'll be supportive. If it doesn't, then they won't be supportive. I think it is the obligation on all of us as voters to educate ourselves from multiple different sources. And so that's how I would say, for voters who are like, "Well, if the city doesn't call for this report, then how am I going to get information?" I would say, you know, you collect information on everything. You would collect information like you do with anything, like you do with anything that you vote on. Councilmember Schmidt.
Thanks. I thank you, Mayor Combs. I think I just want to present a slightly different view to that because it's the reason why I brought up the second point, that people are only hearing part of the story. So I think a lot of the folks are hearing why this is potentially bad for downtown, why it's potentially bad for business. Part of what the report, I think, will provide is, what does that actually look like? And that's why I suggested that we amend what is in there with questions about the business impact, both from the people who support the initiative and people who are supporting affordable housing. So I think regardless of how people interpret the report, which I think is a fair point, the concern I have is, a lot of folks get a, you know, 60-second burst of, "Please sign this petition. Here's why it's important. Come rally behind the flag." That's not a knock on the initiative. That's how all petitions happen. You know, you don't sit there and have a 25-minute dialogue about it, but you form opinions based on very, very limited information in a lot of these kind of things. And so to me, the report's value is, we're taking inputs from both sides. We're trying to make it as unbiased as possible. Just gives us a lot more information to base real voter decisions on if we decide to go that route versus 60 seconds with a clipboard and "please sign this petition." Or it could be the city doing the same thing and saying, "Please sign up." So I feel like 60 seconds worth of information to form an opinion is not nearly as rich and useful as a fairly detailed report, which I hope this will be, and potentially follow-up reports, as Ms. Grove said. You know, we don't have to limit ourselves to this one report. We can ask the city staff to come back and, you know, continue to help us educate ourselves and educate voters as well. So it's not completely contrary to what you're saying, but I think we have multiple opportunities to bring people on this journey with us, and I wouldn't want to limit that.
Yeah, I think my perspective is that, I think we also have to accept that some people don't want to go on any journey with us. And maybe it's just being on the council for a bit, but I saw this with Measure V. Measure V, we called for the report, and those people who were supportive of Measure B and brought it to the ballot thought that it was biased very specifically. And I don't think it changed, like, anyone's mind, like, right? As being on council, like, I have friends who will call and ask me, like, "Oh, where should I vote on this?" Or like, "I've been doing some research." I remember Measure V, I got lots of calls. No one said, "And I read the report and it said this." It's just not, and I do think, like, you make a really valid point, and I think the logical, the most conservative, not in a political sense, but direction is to, like, call for the report. But again, I think at the end of the day, we're going to end up with a ballot measure. And so I'd say, let's just make that clear now. But, you know, again, I very much appreciate and respect where the council is at on this. But like I said, I'm not making the motion, so, because I don't, I can make a motion for what I want to do, but I don't know if that's going to get much support. Councilmember Wise.
Thank you. So, Councilmember Schmidt, could we maybe go through what you want to add to the report? Or should we run through what is already included in the report? Or how, what would be the best way to do this, you think?
Thanks. I think that both Mr. Sutton and his team from Rutan and HLC and Menlo Together did a lot of the thinking about where the gaps might be. So my preference would be to ask city staff to kind of look at those 15 things and decide what could be potentially done in the timeframe. And then, as Ms. Grove suggested, anything that couldn't get done in the timeframe, ask them to come back a bit later with more information. So I feel like the business impact is probably a pretty high thing on both sides. But I also want to understand, you know, what would this look like from climate and environmental justice, racial and economic equity? There's some really valid points in there. I think there's really valid points about traffic circulation, and we heard about fire safety and other things. So I wouldn't want to be the person to make the judgment on what should make the cut or not, but...
I do want to point out, if you look in the report, a lot of that is already included. So, I mean, five, impact on communities' ability to attract, retain business employment. There's impact on traffic congestion, existing business districts, developed areas. I'm not, I don't know if I'm seeing fire, but maybe should we ask the city attorney to go through what would be included in the report? Because I do think that there's quite a bit of overlap in what's been asked and what's already included.
I mean, the request can just be a general direction to staff to, like, look at the proposals from the opponents or from housing advocates and those from supporters and to the extent to which they see gaps, like, you know, make their best effort to make sure that that's covered.
And honestly, I think that's my goal as well is, you know, as Ms. Schindler said, you know, a lot of this is very subjective. We're all even offering up subjective things ourselves, and I know I do that. So I just want to find as objective as we possibly can, and then how we interpret it, we leave it up to each of us as individuals. So I trust the city staff to kind of come up with the right list of additional things to include, eliminate redundancies. And, I mean, if I was going to make a motion, I would make the motion for the report with the amended areas that city staff determines are valid.
I had a few other suggestions that I have gone through with the city manager. I'm wondering if that's sufficient or if I should raise those right now. They're somewhat minor.
I would say raise them now.
Raise them now? Okay. So, the staff report says, well, actually, I guess it's part of the code 9215, that the impact on vacant land, I would also like to see the impact on non-vacant land be considered. When we're looking at the benefit, and all of this is if it can, otherwise it goes to future. Looking at the analysis of benefits of parking spaces, how the parking is utilized, employee versus the customer visitor, and also how, if there's, if it's appropriate here, how to compensate for parking loss during construction. When looking at the analysis of new household... When looking at the analysis of new household expenditures, incorporate the live-work preference into the analysis as appropriate. And I did want to pick up, I think you said, the fire, just that, as well as the other long-term impacts and as well as the short-term impacts. And under, I assume this would be under the VLF study, but the percentage anticipated to own a car, the percentage of residents anticipated to own a car, and the percent anticipated to work within the city, and also other family members who might not be, just how to evaluate the family members. And the timing of the, I think this will be included, but the impact on the housing element as far as the timing of any future elections that are required for the approving housing. Thank you. Oh, and I had one other, and that's when looking at funding sources, looking at nonprofit responses as well as for-profit responses.
I'm happy to make a motion, but I would ask my fellow council members to rein me in if I don't quite get it right. But I think I'm hearing that there's support for a report with additional topics from the attorneys Rutan, HLC, Menlo Together, and the vice mayor, and asking city staff to evaluate how much of that is doable within the timeframe and then anything that can't be done by the deadline is, there's a follow-up report from city staff so we can discuss it a little bit further. So, some form of a motion in that.
Great. Through the mayor, I'd support the vast majority of what the council member just said, except for the additional. I think what would be best is, when the 9212 report comes back, we would identify what we weren't able to do and then just confirm with the council that you do want those things done. I don't think we would just embark on that additional analysis. So I think that was the spirit behind Councilmember Schmidt's statement. Thank you.
So essentially, you're saying that the 9212 report would just be what is specifically outlined in the state provisions that govern it?
Sorry, no. As was stated by Councilmember Schmidt, look at the two letters that came in plus the statements by Vice Mayor Nash. Some of those things are already covered by the scope, some of those may be, I'll say, like readily available to be covered as part of this. There's going to be some items on that list that I'm quite confident cannot be done in the next few weeks.
Okay.
It's pretty much what it comes down to, is a very tight timeline to produce something effectively. The ultimate deadline is 30 days, but to produce something that's releasable by that council meeting in approximately 30 days, we're going to run out of time.
Yeah.
But there's going to be some valid issues that should be studied at some point in the future. I think we can itemize those, scope those out. I'm just saying that those would not automatically be studied, we'd use the next council meeting as the check-in to confirm, yes, please study these 10 additional items. Is that helpful?
That's the spirit, yeah. I think that's the spirit of what I would propose, is that not to just jump right into the extra study, it's a very smart way of doing it, I think, is, would you still, you know, here's what we couldn't get to, would you still like to know about these six or whatever it is? And budget, yeah. So, yeah, definitely, however we write that up, that's the spirit.
So are you making, was that a motion, Councilmember Schmidt?
I'm happy to make that motion, however it gets typed up.
Okay. Well, okay, yeah. So, we do have you as the motion maker and Councilmember Wise as a secondder. And City Clerk Karen, do you understand, well, essentially, the motion is just to call for the 9212 report, like, right?
Perfect. Okay. So then I do have a motion on the floor by City Councilmember Schmidt and a second by City Councilmember Wise to adopt a resolution ordering a report pursuant to Election Code Section 9212, authorize a one-time budget appropriation in the amount of $164,951, and authorize the city manager to execute an amendment to the Master Services Agreement with M Group to the not-to-exceed amount of $164,951 to draft and complete the Election Code Section 9212 report. Any further city council question or discussion? And the motion passes with Mayor Combs dissenting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Clerk Karen, and thank you for everyone who are engaging in this matter and who provide a public comment. Obviously, this is an ongoing discussion in our community, which may last until November of next year's election. With that, we'll move on to informational items. Informational items are transmitted to city council and staff's effort to provide an update on matters of importance to the city council. Informational items are not action items. However, a city council member, city staff member, or a member of the public may request to make a comment or ask a question on any of the informational items. City Clerk Karen, can you call for public comment on the informational items?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Combs. So at this time, if any member of the public wishes to provide comment on informational items K1, city council agenda topics, or K2, the police department quarterly update, if you are in person, return that speaker card. If you're virtual, engage that hand feature. Calling in, please press star nine now. Final call for public comment on our informational items K1 and K2. Seeing none, Mayor Combs, you may continue.
Great. Thank you, Clerk Karen. With that, we'll move on to the city manager's report. Here to introduce the item is City Manager Justin Murphy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Did want to take the opportunity to talk about the weather, and it's a good update since there's a wind advisory in effect. And the National Weather Service has issued a wind advisory for early seasonal storm that may include possible gusts of up to 25 miles per hour starting tonight at 10:00 p.m. through 4:00 p.m. Wednesday. High winds may cause downed power lines, as people may remember from a few years ago. PG&E has activated emergency response crews and pre-located equipment to ensure faster response to any outages and has teams staged on the peninsula to help respond overnight. It's also an opportunity to remind the public about sandbag stations, those are beginning to be set up for the winter season. Information about the locations is on the city's website. So hopefully, this is not a major event, but it's a good reminder to start preparing for the winter storm season. So that concludes my update for this evening.
Thank you very much, City Manager Murphy. We'll move on to the city council member reports. Any reports from city council members since the October 21st city council meeting?
Thank you, Mayor Combs. I just wanted to share with you all that the Home for All Steering Council for San Mateo County will resume its meetings on December 10th, and I'm looking forward to sharing some information after we have that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash.
So, we had Peninsula Clean Energy meeting and there's some information that I actually thought would be best to just read from the release that they had. Peninsula Clean Energy's Board of Directors voted on October 23rd, 2025 to adopt a new agency name, West Flight Energy, that reflects the agency's growth, diversification, and vision for the future. We'll continue operating as Peninsula Clean Energy until we launch the new name in April 2026 alongside Earth Day and our 10-year anniversary. The new name builds on a decade of progress in providing affordable, clean power to residents and businesses across San Mateo County and in the city of Los Banos, and will support stronger customer connection, community engagement, and greater regional impact in the years to come.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Nash. Any other council member reports?